It is now seven o'clock and we are prepared now to conduct the regular meeting of the Board of Alderman's December seventh sixth two thousand eighteen. At this time, we ask you to please stand for the invitation led by Mayor Pro Tem O'Gallan, called Officer DeLeah.
Thank you, Lord, for allowing us another day. I ask you to bless this three counties, the citizens, the soldiers in harm's way, Cumberland County, and Vegas. And a special prayer for those people in California. I ask you to bless them and uplift. Lord, I ask you to look around the schools here and help our teachers, our instructors, to find any children that may be having problems. Hopefully, we can find these children before they harm another child. Lord, thank you. That's my prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with every gene of its core. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Mr. General. Okay, we need to add the introduction of new police officers. Let us make that line D. Introduction. Say again? No, you're saying that we need to add that. So what is, what is to just add? Presentations, nine A. Okay, well, before we do nine A, I would like to move nine A, because we do have students here, I would like to move that before the public forum. So let us move the introduction of, we will do have that to, we will make that six C. No? Ms. Webb.
You just want to move all of the presentations?
No, I just need to move that one because we have students here and I'd like them to be able to leave at a timely manner to get home for studies. That was my intent.
If I may, make a suggestion, if we just make item number seven presentations, and then we'll put the public forum down as number nine, and we'll just switch both of those.
Okay, the public forum is nine. And presentation will be seven. That works. And now, and now.
And then theirs can be nine D.
Nine D, the office is nine D.
I thought that was going to be seventy, you made the presentation seven, so wouldn't that be seventy?
And nine will be the public forum. Any other additions or deletions? May we get a motion, please? Uh, Alderman Jackson.
I make a motion that we approve the, um, the changes to the order of the agenda.
Mayor Pro Tem O'Gallan.
I second the motion.
Has been moved and seconded that we, following the suggested change, all in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, sign of nay. Item six, the approval of consent items. Alderman Southland.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent items for October the twenty-second, twenty eighteen regular meeting, as well as November the first, twenty eighteen special meeting.
Alderman Jackson.
I'll make a motion that we approve, that, I second that motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve consent items, the minutes of the October twenty-second regular meeting, and minutes of the November first special meeting. You heard the motion, are you ready for the question?
Of course.
All in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Okay, item number seven. Uh, the introduction of the Spring Lake Middle School athletes, and to do that, I would like first of all to call the principal Miss Ship, and she will come forward and you can take it from there.
Good evening, Mayor, Dolphins and Ward of Alderman, I do see you representing with your Bronco attire. It looks fantastic. Alright. Thank you so much for inviting us, um, to give us honor and celebration for the great things that we're doing at Spring Lake Middle School. I'm extremely, extremely excited and proud of our Broncos. We're one of the smallest middle schools in Cumberland County schools, but the large schools hate to see us coming because we are fantastic. I have a great staff and students, so I'm just a principal, I get to walk around and smile and be proud. So I'm going to defer to the athletic director, Dr. Cantin, and the coaching staff, so that they can give you words. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Dr. Cantin, I am the athletic director of Spring Lake Middle School. If I could have my football coaches to come stand with me, please? We do appreciate the invitation to be here, um, this evening. Prior to Spring Lake Middle School, I worked at a few other schools, but while I was a teacher, I saw the Spring Lake Middle School wrestling team come to my middle school. And I was not proud of what I saw, the presentation of the actual children. So when I came to Spring Lake Middle School, it was my mission to clean up the appearance and performance of our athletic department. But, I cannot do that by myself. I work with, um, a group of extraordinary coaches, teachers, as well as students. But first and foremost, we work with some extraordinary parents. Parents, would you please stand? Give them a hand, please. Thank you. Another thing we have that's very special is our coaching staff. We've always been champions in various sports. I just came to paint the vision. These guys carried out. So I've been at Spring Lake Middle School for five years, and we've held a division title every single year. And when I'm gone, they're still going to hold the title because it's not me, it's our coaching staff. So I introduce to you, Mr. Hudson, please give him a hand. Coach Donaldson. And Coach Bellamy. These are the guys that put in all the work to make us champions, not only on the field, but in the classroom. If you are here, you're an athlete, and you received an award for the first nine weeks, please stand. Give them a hand, please. One thing we try to emphasize is the student and student athletes, so we have some very intelligent athletes. But at this time, I'm going to turn the mic over to Coach Bellamy, so that he can say some words on his championship team.
Hello. First of all, I'd like to, um, I'm just very excited to be standing there before you all again. Again, like Dr. Cantin said, she's been here for five years, we've had the title for five years, but we're actually on our eighth year consecutive. I would like to thank you all for the support of the Spring Lake community. I've seen you all at the games, rooting, I'd like to thank you for the support of the fans, our students, our parents, I'd like to thank you for everything that you have done for us. We always tell our students, our players, that you are playing for more than you. Every practice, before every game, we always tell them that you are playing for your family and for your community. So that's what we take with us. But at this time, we didn't do that much work, the coaches, our student athletes, they're all the ones that did most of the work, all of the work. So at this time, I'd like for them to come up, so we can acknowledge them at this time. So twenty eighteen, Spring Lake Middle School Division Three champion, can you come up to the front? And this is a very special group, and at this time, I'd like to give you all a round of applause at this time. Now, guys, if you're not trying to know, this is not the banquet, you are being recognized, but we will still have our athletic banquet.
One more hand for our players, please. Guys, don't stand by. Which one of you boys, Deva, did they bomb?
Can anybody sing? Uh, no. You have two people that are springy.
Keep looking, keep looking.
Alderman Cooper. Okay, Alderman Jackson.
I want to tell you boys, thank you so much for job well done for school, because I went to Spring Lake Middle School, went to Spring Lake Junior High, but we ain't going to say how old I am. But I want to say a special recognition, did he sneak out of here, Deva? Where did he go? Deva, I just want to give you a special shout out from my daughter, Rosie Jones.
And we thank you parents and students, because we know that tomorrow is a school day, and there might be homework assignments that need to be done. Let us know when the banquet is, and we'll be there for some, uh, free food. And we thank you all for allowing us to honor, um, our young athletes, because the saying goes, if we don't support them, who will? And, and, and God only knows who that who else will, what they're up to, and most times, it is no good. At this time, let us proceed, uh, Mr. Taylor, Duke Energy.
Governor, see, uh, do you have a copy of the power point? I have my office copies. Everyone received a copy of that? Uh, my name is Evan Taylor, and I am the program manager for the Neighborhood Energy Savior Program with Duke Energy. And I would explain a little bit about that program, tell you the things that we're planning to do, because we want to implement that program here in the Spring Lake area, uh, sometime starting around January. Years ago, I would feel questions from a lot of our Duke customers, asking us about why their bill would fluctuate different times of the year. And what they could do to better manage it and better control the cost. Uh, even to the point of just understanding what things cause, you know, fluctuations in their power bill. And so we created this program as a result of that. It's an educational program, plus we also install measures, and these measures are energy efficient things in the homes, to help them to better manage their energy use. And this is a free program, it doesn't cost the residents, uh, at all to participate. Uh, there's a few elderly rooms that we have, and I'll go over that. Uh, since we started the program back in two thousand and six, uh, we have done about fifty different neighborhoods throughout North and South Carolina with this program. Uh, we've done over forty-five thousand homes going door to door, and actually installing measures in each one of those homes. As well as spending time talking with those residents about their energy usage and how they can better manage their energy use. So basically, there's three parts to the program. We'll come door to door to each home, uh, we'll do a quick energy assessment to see if the measures that we offer would apply to that particular home. And then we will install those measures free of charge to the residents of that home. Also, we will spend time answering their questions about how energy is used and how they can better manage their energy use. And so this is an important educational piece that we try to give to each one of them. To participate in this program, we've designated a neighborhood, and in part of that package that I gave you, there's a map. Everyone that resides inside that yellow area on the map is eligible to participate. They can see that map, okay, there you go. That's, that's the map of the neighborhood that they're designated to participate in this program. So everyone that lives within that area is eligible to participate. Uh, the, the program is implemented by teams of two, and we have generally about four teams of two installers each. And they go door to door throughout the neighborhood and offer the program to the residents. Residents have an option to participate or not participate. But they're eligible to participate, and it is our interest and desire that everybody inside that neighborhood would participate. There's approximately nineteen hundred homes in that neighborhood. So it's quite a few homes there to, to participate in the program. Uh, if a customer participates in the program, and they implement some of the things that we've designated, uh, that we will install, that we encourage them to do. You know, they can save a hundred, two hundred dollars a year in their energy bills by altering their behavior and, and of course allowing us to install some of these measures in their homes. Some of the type measures that we do, there's another, well, uh, brochure that I gave you there, on the back of it, it shows some of the measures that we will install in the homes. Uh, it's eight and a half by eleven sheet there, eight and a half by eleven, there you go. But those are some of the measures that we will install in the homes. Energy efficient light bulbs, air heaters, showerheads, uh, we give a year's supply of, of filters for their furnace, uh, we have weather strip doors, uh, with the weather stripping and door sweep. Uh, and plus we will give them a thermometer that they can monitor the temperature in their house and kind of know what it is, uh, both summer and winter times of the year. And plus we give them educational materials that they can study and implement in their homes as well. And as I said, this is a program that won't cost the residents anything at all, uh, just a little time to allow us to come to their home and install it for them. And that installation part is very important, because we want to make sure that it's working properly and installed before they, before we leave. So that they won't have any problems taking full advantage of it. To get the program started, we, uh, plan to have a kickoff event, and we're working on that right now, trying to find a location and set up a date and time for it. But we haven't completed that process yet. Uh, when we do get that set up, we'd like to have all of you to come, and particularly Mayor, we'd like to have you maybe to speak at that event for us. Uh, we generally, uh, get a variety of numbers of, of people to attend that, we've had as many as five hundred residents come to that event. Uh, and we'd love to have, you know, a large attendance here in, uh, Spring Lake as well. Uh, we expect that time to be somewhere in January, as soon as we get the facility, um, for that event confirmed, uh, we will let you know the date and time for it. Uh, but generally, it's on a Thursday night, somewhere between six and seven thirty in the evening. Uh, and said, teams of two will go door to door, uh, and the residents will get an opportunity to participate. If they happen not to be home when we come through, they are still eligible to participate, and we'll make two and three attempts coming back to their homes to try to, uh, give them the opportunity to participate. Uh, we found it to be very successful, we generally get somewhere between seventy and eighty-five percent of the residents in the neighborhood to participate in this program. So we're looking forward to, um, to doing it here in Spring Lake as well. Have any questions about?
Alderman Southland, Dan Jackson, then Cooper.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, as well as thank you, Mr. Taylor. Uh, just a couple of questions, thank you. Couple of questions, um, do you have to sign up for the program, if you said you were going to come to these different areas? Um, are they, you said in two, are you going around knocking on the doors, are you sign up so you know, and we receive a letter from Duke Energy, so we'll know that, um, the particular time that you're going to come out?
The point of our marketing is to, we will send out a letter to explain the program, and this generally goes out about a month and a half of when we plan to have our event. Uh, and the letter will explain to them that they're eligible to participate, and they've been designated as part of that neighborhood. Uh, we're just sending them a postcard that will let them know when our kickoff event is and where the, the, the facility is that it will be held at, and invite them to that event. A week before we get ready to come to their house, we will send another postcard that will tell them the schedule that we have, so that they are able to be at home, that they can be there to, you know, be available for us to come in and they can participate in the program. As I said though, if they happen not to be at home, we'll come back again and we'll keep checking, we'll put a sticker on their door with a telephone number, that if they call us and say, you know, I need, I need you to come at four thirty on this particular day, we'll set up an appointment for them at that particular time. But we'll notify them in advance through mailings, and we will, as we travel through the neighborhood, we'll give them door stickers to let them know that we're in the neighborhood, and give them phone numbers that they can get in contact with us.
And is it for owners and renters as well?
Yes, for owners, renters, uh, single family homes, uh, manufactured homes, uh, apartments, all eligible to participate. Everybody inside that area is eligible to participate, uh, as long as they are a Duke Energy customer, must be an active Duke Energy customer.
Um, I want, I have two questions to ask you. One of, um, the areas that are outside your area, those areas, if those people wanted to participate, can they, or are they just not qualified for it at all?
Those people outside that area are not qualified to participate in the program. Uh, it's based on criteria that the utility commissions have set up for us to be able to sponsor this program. And we, uh, looked at the areas and identified this neighborhood as needing those qualifications. So those that are outside the neighborhood are not eligible to participate.
Do you have any classes or anything for those that are outside the area to take to, to save, to learn the say to as well?
I can, we could have classes, or we could do some seminars, uh, to give them information about energy savings and, and energy efficiency. We'd have to set those up, that's not normally a part of this neighborhood program, but I have conducted those with residents that were, you know, outside the area, or that were in the area that just kind of wanted to get together and talk about it. So that's something that, you know, I'll be happy to offer to residents. We don't have a real mechanism for getting to them, because we have the addresses and names of everybody inside that neighborhood, that designated area. Uh, the others outside that, we don't intend to mail to.
Okay, okay. And my last question. Will the event that you're hosting in January, would that be in Spring Lake, or would that be outside of Spring Lake?
It would be in Spring Lake. As close to the neighborhood as we can possibly find a facility that will hold in excess of two hundred people.
I just have a second question. The thermometers, are you going to put those in every room in the house, or just certain rooms?
Just one room in the house, once a month, we generally set it up in the area that's most commonly used in the house. A lot of times, that's the family room, or connection with maybe the kitchen and the dining area, or maybe even the bedroom. Depends upon whether residents spend the majority of time. Uh, the purpose there is to try to give them an idea, because this is generally the area that influences their temperature the most. And we want them to be able to know what the temperature is in that room. If you're going to save on energy, then you need to manage your temperature, you know, for your thermostat, so that's the purpose of it. And we're trying to, at one location in the house, we'll locate it in the most useful location.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Uh, Alderman Christian.
All right, so how should you look and make more energy efficient, you're talking about windows, doors?
Well, those are measures that are on that brochure, we're looking to install those, so we're going to look at the doors, we're going to look at the bathrooms, the kitchen, we're going to look at the water heater, we're going to look at the furnace. All these locations where all your light bulbs are located, uh, we're going to look to probably change out those, if they're incandescent type light bulbs. So we'll pretty much go throughout the entire house, particularly those areas that I've just mentioned.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Alright, thank you very much.
We look forward to hearing from you all, really. We look forward to hearing from you, son.
Okay.
Thank you. Hurricane Florence, okay, Mr. Watson and Interim Chief Williams.
President-elect. Uh, Mr. Williams, I have a presentation momentarily, there are new footage, some things, as well as, depending on your work at home, about Hurricane Florence. I'll provide some information until they get brought up. Today, we have spent approximately three hundred and fifty-one, three hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars in Hurricane Florence expenses. Some of that is in general fund, most of it is in the water and soil fund. Uh, we've received from the league municipalities about twenty-five thousand dollars in advance for wind damage. And we've spent, received a small amount of money from, uh, VAIS, which ensures the larger vehicle for the property, for the fire department. So some of those items, they were received, they're all checked for. Today, we've had two meetings with the league municipalities for the insurance, and they probably won't need to come back. FEMA, uh, we've met with six, will be meeting by the end of the week six times. We're meeting in project meetings, as well as on-site meetings, they started today. We saw two of the board members that were out in the rain and the wind today, and, uh, we're going to be meeting tomorrow, Wednesday, two, two times on Wednesday, two different meetings. And, uh, that handling launch a little bit different than in Matthew, everything now is electronic. You've got to upload all the documents locally into their portal. You've got to upload all the documents locally into their portal. So myself and Chief Williams and the segment and some other of the partners, we're all working together as a team to make sure all that happens. And I'm in the process of uploading insurance documents to the FEMA website with a total of three hundred and thirty pages. And I had to upload those in four different sections, since that's how I can upload them from the Leaning's website. And one of the things that the site manager said today, I want to write back, said that his quote was, "This is a long process." So we want to make sure I told the board about that tonight. We're providing them as much information as possible as well. Chief Williams is not all riding with them. If they have any, any questions, like today I had a question, by the way, for a treatment plant, I got the engineer on the phone. And we talked to him about maybe getting some plans when it was originally, so forth, what they can see the schematics. Also talked about mitigation where, you know, something we can make better for the future. So if something happens again, we, some of its damage will happen. So that's, that's the type of things that we're talking about. That's all I had for the update. Uh, Chief Williams has got something he's going to show for the board to look at at present time.
As Mr. Watson said, we spent the day, um, with them out. We went out to Lake Treaty. We spent time out there. I had pictures of this, uh, somehow the computer is now, I don't know what it was. I had computer, uh, pictures, it's a lot easier to see. Uh, that whole s- uh, stretch of Lake Treaty, they measured out to about two hundred and eighty-one feet. That they're going to replace the whole thing, give us money to replace that, which was a good, good deal. Uh, we went to Regina. They had three spots in Regina, that's where we met them. Um, they're going to break them up, they're going to fix those for us. Uh, whatever, Chris and, uh, they had a spot over there of a hundred and twenty feet they want to fix for us, which was great. Um, I had big, no, there they are. There's, uh, the two hundred and eighty-one feet. Uh, that's some of the damage already on there. Now, he's talking about how low the, uh, concrete is, not a whole lot of concrete there, not a whole lot of base to it. Um, so that's kind of what the water damage is, there's a lot more damage on that. Um, there's more of it, how it's holding water. Um, but it's not, holding water and another shot, go ahead Regina. Uh, of course, right there, you see where the cone is, the other cone down there. Like I said, I put this together about eighteen minutes before this program, so I had it together with you. Uh, but there's closer pictures to them. There's three spots on there that they want to move, go ahead. One is where we're getting started to get a sinkhole there. Um, it's starting to really get in there, there's two certain spots. They're, they're going to cut that whole spot out. Do you see that whole white mark on that first picture? They're going to cut all that out and replace all that, which is going to be good. We'll do that, I say they, they're going to give us money to replace all that, it's just a little bit of a night. Go ahead, it's Area Two. Area Two is a little clump hole, which you probably hear about every time you're going through there, one of y'all. Uh, they're going to cut a good chunk of that out, probably like a four or four, so they're going to patch that up real nice. And then the third one is that sinkhole where the whole cone is inside of. So they're going to cut that out, we'll get it all fixed, get it all leveled back up and give it fixed so that road cleans up. Um, we started, uh, I believe the management will put out a bid now, so we can go ahead and get these things started to get done, so we're not keep holding up things. Uh, we want to get things fixed, but as Mr. Watson said, it's, it's the money coming back in is where the problem is. It takes a while to get it back, but we can't start the process of getting our town back to what we need to be. Instead of looking like a cone thing and a burrow thing that nobody likes. Uh, go ahead, uh, Ms. Williams. And this wasn't on their list, but they did take the time because we did talk about it. Uh, we went over there, you can see where that patchwork was. Uh, and basically from where I am, uh, taking this picture from, right past, if you go again the next picture, you'll see a grate down there. It's about a hundred and twenty feet, that thing's all cracked up. You see where the first patchwork there they had was from the last hurricane. Uh, they patched it up, uh, but you see it's going right from deep in and tearing up again. So from where I was standing a minute ago to where they're at now down there with that grate is, there's a lot of things. It's going to be a hundred and twenty feet that they're going to give us to fix that too, so it's going to be another. And that's a sinkhole down there, so we're really going to do some work down there. It's going to be good for them to fix that up. This little picture here, just, um, what I put on here for is, I don't know if you guys got to see a lot of this drone footage that we had. Um, it was really, it really takes you away. Back at little pond back there that you see, it's not a pond, that's our wastewater treatment plant, um, which is back there by itself, that little loop. It's, uh, that's how bad it was. Uh, the next picture I have, the next little thing I have here. Okay, I think you hit the bottom now, it should, should start playing. Oh, okay, yeah. So, we're on two ten here, this is, uh, this is the firefighter flying, it's drawing, uh, just to show you the amount of water that was out there, if you didn't really get to see it as much as, you know, we were out there doing it. Um, yeah, that, that little V right there is right there before you hit the bridge on two ten. And that's how much water was down there. And then where your bridge starts right there where that little white line is, right after that is a bridge. So that's how much water was crossing over that little river. Um, that's the rail, the little white lines outside all the rails, it was going over the rails. That back there where we're at, um, to the right, you see that little pond? That's where they dug out for all the, the dirt. Uh, so thank the Lord that they did that, because all that water would have been in that neighborhood if not. So we got really, really lucky that that was like that. Um, and that's one of the things that we sent this off, and I said, "That might save us a little bit by that pond being done." Mr. Gerald will have this right here, if you want to get it sent to you, and you can really look at and study. And we'll spin back around, like I said, he just lined this thing around. We'll go back down here in a minute to, again, you'll see how much water is really out there. Right there to the right, the first thing you see, that's a concrete plant, and it's all the way underwater. Um, it's, it had, it's not backed up yet, I don't know what they're going to do to that. Um, and I know beforehand, Ms. Olin and the mayor and, and some of y'all went into this, uh, Parity's building, we had a Parity apartment complex with me, and asked me how far the water was going to be. And I told them, "I don't think it's going to go by that, that second building," is what they told me. As you see, it's on the fourth building.
That's right.
Jason from, I can bet. And it was way up there. I was going by what they were telling us, we can't tell. But again, out there you see it, um, that's how much water is on that. That's why we have nine buildings damaged in that. Um, and then again, out here, we don't go out there as much as I wish we would have on that wastewater plant. I thought he did, but we did, but you can see it back there. That, you know, you see like one building and maybe a little bit of a fence. Um, FEMA has these, we, we send them all the videos, we have all the pictures, we have everything that we have, we have sent to them so they understand the, the damage that we did have on this. And, uh, I'm thankful that we have this footage, because this is hard to get, you know, a drone footage like this. So, but right there, you can still see it again, I mean, it is, it everywhere, everywhere, you know that. But this is some of the things, he'll have this, he can give it to you. Um, if you just want to watch it or look at it, whatever you want to do with it. Uh, like I said, they have all this, and like I said, sorry for the quickness of it, but I just kind of put it together so you guys can understand. I think the pictures really do explain a lot more than what we're doing than just nothing. I think it's, uh, you have any questions?
Our other woman's talking.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the work, thank you for the drawing. It's fascinating to see, visualize, uh, just how devastating it was. But I have, um, written down here, the Lower Little River, for future reference. I noticed, if I'm correct, on the Pine Tree Lane, over by the Cross from Williams Chapel, looks like they start digging holes. Do you know what that, is that connected with the Lower Little River? Off Pine Tree, I mean, uh, Chapel Hill Road.
That should, I should add with it with, uh, probably.
Oh, so we can. All right, thank you. And, you know, to one of the questions, you said that FEMA, it takes a while, that Mr. Gerald was going to start contracting it out to, to fix these areas, the infrastructure. Now, on the infrastructure with the asphalt, the town board have been going through this for, um, with our streets, our infrastructure. When they laid the asphalt, and I think it was like one inch, and we have a contractor come out and said it need to be, as you showed, build up a little bit more because there was nothing underneath the asphalt, and that's what caused it to crack as quick as it has been doing with the flood as well as with the wear and tear with vehicles and stuff like that. So I think, uh, we might need to take that consideration, because we do have it in our minutes. Uh, when we had our asphalt laying prior, the latest asphalt, they built it up more than that one inch. And it is in our minutes, uh, stating that as well. I don't know if y'all know that, but it is because it's, that asphalt is thin.
Yeah, super thin, that was the excuse today, well, that, that was the reason he told us why it cracked.
Right, exactly.
They're probably a super foundation problem, this man.
So we might need to take that into consideration when we, for future reference, when we're going back to the infrastructure to lay it that is built up more than that one inch. Okay, and let's see, when you talk about the pit hole, my husband was asking Mr. Gerald about that pit hole. So we thank God that it was saved, grace that some of that water flowed that way. But the work that you all are doing in the community, and I think that we had a group of individuals to come out, and I spoke to Mr. Gerald as well, because when we've asked for public form, because individuals are asking in the community, and to make it easy access for them to have, uh, FEMA representatives here, so they can come and ask questions. Are you all representing the community in any kind of way, or when you're out there, individual to ask you about their personal, uh, property as well? Because some of that is a connection with the Lower Little River and how they're home.
Ms. Olin, the people we need to report, public assistance, FEMA representatives for property and homeowners, that's a totally different section of the FEMA representatives.
Right.
So I think representative for that is an individual in Fayetteville. I think Mr. Gerald has that person's name.
Exactly. Well, maybe we can, uh, network together. I know you represent the town of Spring Lake, it's a state, you've done an excellent job, but we do need to take into consideration, since it takes a little while to make, uh, to have them come out as well. Um, I know it's totally separate from you all, but I'm sure in the community, people probably ask you questions.
We, we really haven't had, uh, citizens ask any questions, but since you brought it up, you're great, we'll give that number. So someone does, we can say, "Contact these people." Because, I mean, they might recognize us out there, uh, just doing something, and they could ask us questions. So, yeah, we'll definitely give them, and that way we can pass it on to them right there, right there, so it feels like we're more connected.
Good, thank you very much.
Our other woman, Cooper, then Mayor Protemo Garrett, then Mr. Gerald, we have that order, please.
Thank you, Mayor Dobbins. My question, and I spoke to you all earlier, the, uh, barrel, uh, setup in Holly, in New Holly Hills is really dangerous, and I've, I've almost been hit, and, um, other citizens have, um, almost been hit. And that's, uh, one on Odio Road and one on Goodyear. And one on Regina. And Regina, I, I think that we need to figure out something else because it's, it's really dangerous. And, um, it, it, I don't know how long it's going to be before they, they are able to do repairs, but something, something bad is going to happen, I believe.
Well, I mean, we got some answers today, we were looking for, so, uh, we should be starting to move on to the repairs on. I did want to expend the money on anything, it told about people that we were going to get reimbursed for what we were doing, and it had to come out of our normal operating budget. Uh, but I just wanted to make sure that there's, we were going to get reimbursed for these fixes, uh, because we had some around Macview on some of the reimbursements.
Right, it's, um, I, I think sometimes it's center safety, sometimes it's. The one on Odio, especially at night, is really unsafe. And the one on Goodyear is, people don't know where to go, you know, uh, at that intersection, so.
This man?
Yeah, thank you.
We want to find a way around.
Thank you.
Mr. Garrett?
Maybe we can get some blinking lights out, something like that at night. Hey, uh, it's cold weather, asphalt. Uh, wondering if we actually put asphalt down? I was kind of explaining that it's got to be over fifty degrees to lay asphalt. So basically all we can do is put a patch on there or crush it around or something.
That is, uh, weather prohibited. I think those plants stop at forty-five degrees. Uh, so, so that's the whole process, but this, that's the whole problem, is the process, they slow the process down. And if you don't follow the process, you will not get reimbursed. And that's what we're trying to make sure is that we get reimbursed. So this is the wintertime, and following the process, that might be an issue. Um, so we're, so we met today, so we submitted, uh, over the computer. I know we've been in talks with them, they've come out before, and they sent this, I call this the final assessment team. They came out and made assessments. They okayed the repair on a couple, on a few of those items, but those are not all of the items that were damaged. Those are just the ones that, that team Mark is being, uh, the most pressing. So we're going to get that advertisement out and hopefully, um, move forward with three bids.
Okay, well, I was kind of curious, what kind of repairs are we actually going to do? Are we going to be doing crush and run or, because we can't do asphalt.
We're going to do permanent repairs. We can do asphalt as long as the plant is running. Um, if the plant is not running, uh, that's something we need to ask FEMA to do.
Isn't that something that happens, uh, one time, you should have.
Yeah, I think, but I think the ground has to be a certain temp, I think it has to be, you know, like forty degrees, like that's a ground temp.
Forty-five.
Uh, yeah, it's having something we have to look at and see, you know, we, we don't have a dog in the fight on this, I don't. Um, I'm just a fire guy, but, uh, we can ask them tomorrow, because we're going to have them tomorrow. Uh, and I will ask them about how can we speed this thing up, where we can get the stuff done before it gets twelve below.
Okay. One other question. Uh, the money that we're asking for reimbursed, I think we had a storm by the end of February, two years ago. Uh, we were spending the money as things were going on. Uh, like the boat, Fountain Boat we just bought, is that something we're going to get reimbursed for?
That's correct. We, we will get a, uh, reimbursement on that. We bought the boat for the rescue and replacement, and we did owe money back for that.
Okay, so it's things like the road that we need to leave alone for them to see. In other words, we couldn't repair the road.
The damage wise is, that's, that's the problem with this process, Mr. Mayor, uh, Gerald, now I'll talk about it. It is, the problem with FEMA is, they have to lay eyes on it, they have to inspect it, they have to see what the damages is for us to do that, for us to fix.
Took this long to get them out here, to date and look at it, happen so.
I, I agree, I agree, I'm with you. You know, we, we, tomorrow, we'll be at, um, we'll be at the shops, and then we go back out to wastewater treatment plant on Wednesday. You know, they will be here with them until, but we're going to be, we're just trying to do everything we can, every dollar we can back out of it. I don't want to rush and throw it, and then, and we short ourselves.
So, one of the bottom lines is, the barrels would have to suffice for now, is that correct? The barrels themselves would have to, would have to do as a safety precaution and a warning.
That's correct. If we want to go correct, if we want to right, do correct, and, and make sure we're covered for, yeah, it's going to take a little bit.
And, and the thing that's important does, as board members and as citizens who are listening to this tonight, many times people get frustrated because they feel like nothing is being done, but we have not heard that tonight. Things are being done, but those things are, some things are beyond our control. So therefore, we will leave the barrels so that nobody will run their car in, in, into, uh, in, into, uh... So therefore, we will leave the barrels, so that nobody will run their car in, in, into, uh, in, into, uh, a deep hole, thereby making the problem for everybody even worse. Mr. Gerald.
Right, uh, uh, basically, we, we could go and fix everything out there now, fix it all, but you will not get reimbursed. So, the problem is following the process. So Matthew, the money probably came in maybe a little bit faster, but they slowed it down even further, because when I was in Matthews, the way it's working here now is the way it worked for me in Matthews, my experience. So as Mr. O, um, Mayor O'Gara, um, Mayor Proton O'Gara stated, they may have been able to spend it faster in Matthews, in, uh, Matthew, but Florence, that is not the case, and that's the problem.
Board member, I will say this, the Public Assistance Union, which they came out, they just set up an office in Fayetteville. And most of them, I talked to them, there were six of them today, probably six every day, but all have a different function. Uh, they will be here, probably two to three months.
Oh, is it in the February?
At least through February, working the whole region, and we're the first thought. So we were already the first ones in line to come see, because we, we put it in the system as soon as the hurricane was over with, and we knew what, started the assessment on the damage.
All right, the woman, start up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Set the timeframe, I mean, looking, uh, since you're communicating with them, that we may get a reimbursement.
They did not say that word.
Reimbursed, but.
They did not, they will not commit to anything. And as we work through the system, the people we will talk to on Wednesday, the actual project manager, he's the one we would pass that, so not to cite people, it's a totally different thing.
So when?
About six, six, six months to a year?
No, it won't be like that. How the project works, the project manager, who works with FEMA, will okay that the project is okay to be repaired. Uh, they gave us a verbal okay, okay, we're gonna run the advertisement. Once we run the advertisement, we go back to the board, the board picks the low bid, then we go back to the project manager and say, this was the low bid, it was done, and it brought us to our purchasing policy, and our board said this company A was the low bid. Then you go on repair, and each repair has to be done like that. So.
The, the one thing that we'll speak of, us getting checks this time, is, just what he said, project manager, we, we meet him every week. We sit down with him, and we give him all the paperwork, and he uploads it. As soon as he uploads it and signs off on it, it goes up to him. We've already got stuff sent up there. Uh, we'll send again, we have a list of stuff we're gonna give this time. As soon as he looks at it, he'll, he'll sign off on it, he uploads it. That, that starts the process of getting checks back. So long as we keep this process going, that's why, like, the two roads that we hit today, they thought that was the worst road we had. Uh, that's what it was listed to them. So, that's why we did these. The, the crew now is uploading everything in there, they're filming it out, they'll show it to him, he'll say, yep, and they'll upload it, because everything goes like that back. That's how they wanna do these now, so we can turn money around. Uh, we don't know exactly when we get checked, but we'll start seeing money coming back for these projects, project here, project there. And all the little stuff that we can get back, that receipts and the truck usage, stuff like that, we'll turn those in quick, so we can get money back. If we have to run around using the roads, we can do that, we'll have the money. So, yeah, we're, there's, there's a cycle that we're really wanting to break with. It don't look like it, but we are.
And that's one track we're on. The other track is, we get the same information, send it to the, the insurance, the insurance is just for the leading municipalities, which is the outside person, we, we send them information at the same time, but basically, whatever the insurance doesn't pay, FEMA will pay it back. So we make sure FEMA knows what the insurance people have paid us, so they will, we will get paid, see, see what.
How long does it take the insurance, um?
We've already got a check, but it's twenty-four thousand dollars, and I expect it's more of that within the next, next few weeks, I'm expecting that to happen.
The money is coming?
Yes.
Alright. Y'all doing your due diligence, money's coming in, so I guess we can start working on some of those projects. I think you said to be in, uh, as a cycle, and the most, uh, areas that's affected, uh, I think that should be priority in those different areas. I'm sure y'all know that.
All right, the woman.
Yes, um, I just wanna revisit. I wasn't asking the barrels to do, I was asking, was there another way, or like what, Templeton, I mean, O'Gara said, maybe some lighting? Those are really dark roads and streets. I live in that community, and I, I go up and down those streets every day. And just coming here to the meeting today, Odell Road was, it was scary coming down it, because it's dark, you can't see the barrels. And, um, like I said, just coming down Goodyear to my home, I've, I've almost been hit four times. So, I'm, in the interest of safety, I'm asking that we figure something else out, put some money out there, configure the barrels another way or something. But, in the interest of safety, I think it needs to be addressed, and I think it needs to be addressed right away.
I guess, uh, we did try with cones first, and they didn't get the stuff in.
Right.
Which led to a car falling into the one on Goodyear, to probably would be screened and prepared instead of, for the safety of people.
Well, maybe there's some, some type of lighting.
But we will look at, at alternatives.
Yeah. Thank you, thank you. Uh, Chief McDavid.
Uh, good evening, uh, Mayor, women of the board. Uh, just briefly, I would just like to take an opportunity to introduce the, uh, newest officers with the Spring Lake Police Department. Uh, hopefully this helps, and, uh, you know, the board and the community being more familiar with the officers that currently have police in, uh, the streets here in North Carolina. First officer, we have, um, Officer Orlando Smith. Uh, Officer Smith started with the department in August of, August sixth, two thousand eighteen. He's completed his field training, and he's now solo patrol. Then we have Officer Hunt. That's your first name, Chelsea, sorry about that. Uh, Officer Chelsea Hunt, she also started on August the sixth, two thousand eighteen. She too has completed her field training, and she's currently, uh, in solo patrol. Next, we have Officer John Benninger. His name's a little bit difficult to pronounce, I just got him dead. Uh, but anyways, he started, uh, July ninth, two thousand eighteen. He too has completed, uh, his, uh, field training in solo patrol. And lastly, we have Officer Kevin Love. He started on, um, June the fifth, two thousand eighteen. He too is now in solo patrol. Just want to congratulate, uh, these officers, and officially welcome them aboard.
Well, that doesn't make a decision, I take it. We'd like to congratulate the crew, ladies and gentlemen.
You're fine. You're in the shot, but it's fine. You've been in the shot the whole time, though, so it's fine. Yeah, it's fat.
Thank you. At this time, we have two items for our first area, and I'll call this A.
Continue your order, bro.
Yeah, but eight remain in favor, yeah. I'm sorry, eight.
The first case is P eighteen thirty-four. It is a requested rezoning of one point two eight acres from R six A to C three. In the center of the screen, you will see the subject property is in a hatch pattern. This is the surrounding land use, the, again, the center of the screen, you see the subject property in a hatch pattern. The existing use of that is a vacant lot. Uh, yellow represents residential, S W represents single Y, G W represents double Y. Double Y, um, number one is for a duplex, number two is a residential, four is a facility, number three is a hair salon, four a strip mall, five residential apartments, six is a vacant garage, seven is tart properties, eight is vacant commercial, and nine is F T C C. To the north of the property, you have some C one P, you have some R six A, some C three, and some C P. R five A and M P. To the east of the property, you have R five A, R six A, R ten. South is R six A, C three, and C P, and there's some R ten. To the west of the property, it's R ten, R six, and it's like R five A. Again, it's a subject property shown in the center of the screen, it's outlined in blue, this is the aerial photo of the site. This is the hybrid soil, um, if there were, there are none. That's the water sewer map, you still got waters on this here. These are photos of the site. If you could go back to the aerial photo. Again, this is a rezoning request. The Joint Planning Board recommended denial for the rezoning of R six A, residential to C three, heavy commercial, and approval of rezoning from R six A residential to C P, plant commercial. The Cumming County Joint Planning Board found that it was consistent with the adopted Spring Lake land use plan in two thousand three, and the applicant was in agreement with the changes from the C three to the C P. The C P planned district will enable the proposed, the, the board will have the oversight of the proposed site plans, ensuring development complies with the minimum town standards, and the district is in harmony with the surrounding zoning and existing land uses. If the board so chooses to make a motion, if the board would to make the motion subject to the action that was found in your packets, um, for this case.
Oh, are you finished, Ellen?
I'm done with that.
Can you, oh, okay. Is there anyone else to speak for or against? P eighteen dash thirty-four. Is there anyone to speak for or against P eighty-one dash thirty-four that is zoning? For the third time, is there anyone to speak for or against? P eighteen dash thirty-four. Is there a motion to close this particular aspect of the program? All right, the woman Cooper.
I second the motion that we close, uh, P eighteen dash thirty-four rezoning of the one point two eight plus acres.
All right, woman Jackson.
I second that motion.
It's been moved in second. You've heard the motion, you asked for the question.
Question.
All in favor of closing this part of the program, if you now would sign.
Aye.
And opposed, I'd sign a name. Thank you, uh, Miss Page, you may now present, uh, P eighteen dash forty-one.
P eighteen dash forty-one, there is no, uh, presentation for that, basically. This is the replacing with conditional use district, and it's a text amendment. Uh, replacing the conditional use district and permit with conditional zoning to just, and changing the words, to conditional zoning districts. Um, the Cumming County Joint Planning Board recommends approval of text amendment to the Spring Lake zoning ordinance, finding that it is a, that is inconsistent, and the request will allow for consistency between the town and county zoning regulation. Um, the proposed text amendment will not cause any changes to the Spring Lake area land use plan map.
Thank you. Is there anyone here to speak for or against? P eighteen dash forty-one. Is there anyone here to speak for or against P eighteen dash forty-one? For the third time, is there anyone here to speak for or against P eighteen dash forty-one? A motion to close this part of the program. All right, woman Cooper.
I make a motion that we close, uh, the program for P eighteen dash forty-one, Spring Lake zoning, zoning ordinance, text amendment, conditional zoning.
All right, woman Jackson.
I second that motion.
It has been moved in second after we closed the program for P eighteen dash forty-one, Spring Lake zoning ordinance. All in favor, sign a aye.
Aye.
And opposed, sign a nay. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you, uh, Miss Page, we can get you again momentarily. There is one sign up now for the other quarter. Bellton, if you will come forth, with your name and address, please. Mr. Harold Bellton.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. My name is Harold Bellton. I live at two zero six Tram Road, here in the city of Spring Lake, North Carolina. And I'm speaking tonight on the, uh, Circle K that you have on your agenda tonight. And my, my, uh, reason to be here is mostly asking questions of the board, not to say yea or nay, or give an opinion about whether Circle K should be allowed to go forward. So if I may, I will go ahead and ask the questions, and hopefully either the board or the representative of Circle K can answer those. So, and I've lived in the area for all my, for most of my life. So my question, my concern is, an environmental assessment, has it been done for water mitigation on that site? That's question number one. Question number two is, is, have you been provided something that tells you any safety mechanisms if there is a gas leak on that site? Because it, it is in the middle of a neighborhood on Tram Road and Bash Road. Question number three, to talk about the site work for lights and noise at night, because it is, again, in a neighborhood. Question number four, what is being done about a travel route to get from Tram Road to Highway eighty-seven, and then on to Bash Road? Question, next question is, truck parking is safe? You know, right now, the trucks park on the other side of Highway eighty-seven, and as we both, as we all know, that getting in and out of there is a safety concern. And being a gas station, convenience store, we have a safety concern about your law and lawlessness in that area, if, uh, with a new and huge, uh, Circle K gas and convenience store. But those are the questions I have, those are my concerns, especially with the water mitigation, because having lived there most of my life, I know that water always stands right there in that lower area behind the residence of Mr. Gerald Lucas. So those are the questions, my concerns, and I would like to hear some, uh, responses from either the board or from the engineers from Circle K. Thank you.
Gerald. Uh, if you would, sir, uh, those questions would be, we will provide written response.
To whom should I leave them?
You can leave them with me.
Okay.
That was a very good portion, so we give the written response, the board will have it as well, so we'll know, since you're citizens, uh, what the response for a very good, uh, portions.
I see that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. New business, budget ordinance amendment two thousand and eighteen eight, Mr. Gerald.
Yes, Mayor, Board of Alderman, uh bringing the issue back uh to the board that was tabled about the reorganization of uh Public Works, um the Public Works Department and to rename um positions. Uh after having time to assess what is currently known as Public Works Department, I believe the restructuring department can provide an opportunity to separate the sub-departments into categories that would better utilize the supervisors. I would like to have a town engineer uh who will be performing administrative and technical duties um with work in preparation of economic development, site plans, program management. Who will also supervise the co-enforcement and the planning sections of the town. I believe we need a general service individual to supervise the street sanitation of the town. And additionally, I'm probably to change the name of the building and ground maintenance supervisor to the building and ground specialist. That position reports directly to me, not necessarily to any department. Should the board approve these requests, it will be the same number of employees, uh they will just uh have different titles. Uh the duties will be better separated out through the Public Works Department. Additionally, the finance director, it was brought to me uh by the board, uh that uh that position was slated to report to me. That would have to be changed in our town charter if that was, uh if that is something the board still wanted to do. So um I'm recommending that we approve the change to Public Works Director to Town Engineer. The change of the Director of Streets and Ground Sanitation, we change the General Service Director and the Buildings and Ground Maintenance Supervisor be trained, be changed to uh Buildings Supervisor. I ask that you approve this recommendation and the motion.
Before any motions made, uh let us ask whatever questions are necessary, then we can be led as to how that motion can proceed. All right, woman Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Thomas. Um one more question is, why is it that we can't, why does the change can't wait until the next budget? Because we just went through a reorganization um back in June, I believe. And so I'm just wondering why these changes can't wait until our next budget? And then we can implement it and take a really good look at, you know, what we need and what changes we need to make.
That's, that's a very good question. The storm, um the storm basically prompted me to do this. As, as we all know, we had a town engineer who left, and that person was able to call out the flood elevations. Which that is important, and in that job script, it did not require a town engineer. Uh that person definitely will be all over those, you can see the amount of cleanup that we have. So the true Public Works Director would not necessarily be involved to the cleanup to that level. Um that person is in uh the general service position, is involved in not only cleanup, um but the managing of contractors to facilitate cleanup. So that's important. And then also as far as the building and ground supervisor, our buildings and grounds have been damaged. And also uh that position not only does that type of manual work, but also technical work, like getting up the um screen so you can flat so people as they come into the lobby can see what's going on in the town. So if this was something that I thought shouldn't wait just because of the storm, it just showed those, it just showed those glaring um problems. And definitely with the uh new development coming in like Circle K, um um Zaxby's, and then other road alterations, Spring Lake is really at the point where it needs an engineer. So that's why.
Um but it's, so it's something we need to do right away, it's not something that can wait.
I, I think so, I think it's something we need to do right away. Um in the manager's report, uh we, we have been talking to D O T, um Prime has been talking to D O T. Um we're about to get a bridge going over Spring Avenue, so we're gonna reestablish that. Um and that's something definitely we would need a town engineer to look at. And also those um um burrow pits, and definitely how we could possibly redirect water to be pumped into those pits and possibly save parts of the town from flooding.
So if you're not going to just get an engineer, uh would the rest of, everything else be able to operate properly or? I mean, I understand needing an engineer, but do we really need to change all the other departments?
I would like to, but if, if those are giving you pause, we definitely need the town engineer. We definitely.
Thank you.
Uh I think, uh all right, woman, I'm sorry, all right, woman Christian, I'm sorry. All right, woman Southern.
Kind of a follow-up to what you were just talking about. Do we already have people in place in the positions, or are you gonna have to, you need new hires?
Not for the town engineer, we don't, we don't have a public works person slash town engineer.
So we're gonna have to go on a hiring spree?
We're gonna have to hire the town engineer, yes. No hiring spree.
Okay.
No hiring spree.
This may be your.
Yes, sir.
All right, woman Southern.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh Mr. Gerald, I can compare what you're saying, you need a uh town engineer, uh the other positions as a board member. I think the individuals are in place. I don't know if it's any, um I would like to wait as well to budget time. Uh but I do know the town needs a town engineer. Uh as well as looking at the, the chart, was it any pay increase on here? I was trying to see.
No pay increase, no pay increase, no.
But just the title change?
Yes.
Um but, so if it's just a title change, and we have the individuals already in place, no pay increase, then would it be efficient just to give the engineer this particular time? But why are we pushing that, these uh specialists, the, the names? Why are we pushing the Director of General Service, because they're already doing the work, right?
Yes.
Okay, as well as Building Maintenance Specialists? It's a fifty-seven grade, I don't know, and is that what it was prior?
That's right, Specialist.
I have to go back and look on that other sheet that I had. But anyway, I can compare what you need in the town engineer. That's all.
Just, anything? So the motion will remain to hire a town engineer when we move forward.
All right, woman Jackson.
Um just a quick question, how are you changing the names? How does that affect the budget?
It doesn't affect the budget at all, it just makes it more efficient, uh it's what they're actually doing. Um it's just what, what they're actually, you know.
All right, woman Southern.
Like, Mr. Gerald, like the motion, you said the board, town, hire as a town engineer, and what is the grade? Is it on there?
It's exactly the same, it's the same as the Public Works Department. So we'll be eliminating the Public Works Director and calling it Town Engineer.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, Christian.
Second that motion.
It has been moved in second that the town hired a town engineer. You heard the motion, are you ready for the question?
Question.
All in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
And opposed, sign of nay. So all right, if we're. All right, woman Jackson.
I, I guess I'm confused, what about the name? It didn't have.
Okay, back to uh Miss Page, page P eighteen dash thirty-four. Thank you for your answer. Well, um.
See, um if I made the packet, the action memo that you received in the packet, it has the, if the board so chooses to print it. Um it's the action memo and the action that was done by the Cumberland County Joint Planning Board. If the board so chooses to read that into the um the record and, and pass it, granting the motion. Or, did you have any questions?
Are, are there questions before we proceed? Here we go. Is there a motion to approve or deny case P eighteen dash thirty-four? Uh that was, all right, woman Jackson.
Stop.
I'm sorry. I was just gonna know the way, uh, all right, woman Cooper.
Thank you very much. I make a motion that we approve case P eighteen dash thirty-four rezoning of one point two plus eight acres from R six A to, um R six A residential to C P.
All right, woman Jackson.
I second that motion.
You, it's been moved, it's been moved in second to approve case P eighteen dash thirty-four rezoning of one point two eight acres from R six A residential to C three.
With C P, I said C P.
It was C three.
Yeah, but um they, they recommended that we approve as C P, uh planned commercial, right?
Yes, and the reason for that is with C three, um all site plans would just be going through the town. Whereas with C P, it would be going through the planning and inspection office and then coming back to the town. So we, making sure it's being properly meeting the minimum town standards.
So, um, so that I'm, I'm straight to, uh, um, okay, uh, again, it is relevant to C three, so you were saying.
I don't know if you got the, the copy of that packet with the action memo, but it has the um Planning Board's decision where it recommends denial of the rezoning from R six A residential to C three heavy commercial and approval, approval of the rezoning from R six A residential to C P planned commercial. And it finds that it's consistent with the adopted Spring Lake Land Use Plan of two thousand and three, which calls for heavy commercial. Um the after, the action further of disapproval of the request and find reasonable and.
This attachment, I have it, but it's no number on it, but it is uh subdivision and C P site plan sketch.
That'll be eighteen thirty-four.
Right. In the back.
Ms. Webb, for the record, uh did you get all of that? And we will be, and we find that all legal and everything?
Yes, sir, because our memo as well, um the memo against the island of Tindie also says that we are recommending approval case, uh this case to a C P planned commercial.
I, I read it earlier, I'm just trying to locate it. So was the, uh was the motion correctly stated and correctly said? All in favor, the sign of aye.
Aye.
And opposed, sign of nay. And we all legal, all right? All right. Thank you, we just want to be right. Okay, uh, case P eighteen dash forty-one?
Yes, that is the uh text amendment, and that is um replacing conditional use district and permit with conditional zoning district. And the Planning Board recommends approval of the text amendment to the Spring Lake zoning ordinance, finding that it is consistent and that it will offer consistency between the town's county zoning ordinance, zoning regulations. Um and it will not cause any changes to the Spring Lake area land use plan map.
All right, woman Jackson.
I make a motion that we approve case P eighteen dash forty-one revision amendments to the town's Spring Lake zoning ordinance.
All right, woman Southern. Okay, all right, Mayor, for Timo Garrett.
I second that motion.
It has been moved in second that case P eighteen dash forty-one revision and amendments to the town's Spring Lake zoning ordinance. You heard the motion, are you ready for the question?
Question.
All in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Case eighteen dash zero nine four consideration of Waterford Strip Center. Miss Page.
The property owner of case eighteen dash zero nine four is consideration of the Waterford Strip Center. The property owner is requesting approval of a strip shopping center for commercial slash retail slash restaurant space and a zero lot line subdivision. Um. If you could go to the, that was the aerial photo, the subject property was outlined in blue, and this is the proposed site plan that was submitted. Um basically, the site plan is for development and that location to the right over here. And they are supplying the lots in four, so it would be a zero lot line subdivision. But for tonight, it's just for that and for the C P site plan review.
You can turn the overhead lights on.
That pointer, that's the, uh, right.
Oh, is this thing?
He's gonna have to pick up all the G P.
Oh, who was right there?
He'll pick all that G P.
Um, sorry, but it's like, like two.
They go right through.
Right to here, but that's what it is. That's it, yes.
Okay, that's, that's the mic first, are there questions? For a motion. Oh, did they have a motion to approve or deny? All right, woman Cooper.
I, I thank you, Mayor. I, I make a motion that we approve case P eighteen dash zero nine four, consideration of the Waterford Strip Center. And request for a zero lot line subdivision and C P site plan review.
All right, woman Christian.
Second that motion.
It has been moved in second that we approve case number eighteen dash zero nine four, consideration of Waterford Strip Center. Request for a zero lot line subdivision and C P site plan review. You heard the motion, are you ready for the question? All in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
And opposed, sign of nay. Did you get that, Miss Webb? Thank you. Case ten E, case number eighteen dash twenty-four.
This case, again, that's the subject property, uh this is Spring Park, that's the aerial photo. And this is the detailed site plan that was submitted by the applicant. Um this is a consideration of the Circle K. Uh the property owner is requesting approval of a convenience store. The proposed development is located across the existing street right away at State Route one four five five Tram Road, and will be required to go through the street closing process by the town of Spring Lake Board of Alderman uh prior to any development of the sites.
All right, woman Jackson.
I have a question, since we have a, uh, just a half of stuff to the bottom of the separate page. I'm gonna try to find the answers before we ask these, and if we approve of that, I'll ask you.
Um we, we have to answer to those questions, the, what, any type of water mitigation will be handled through the site plan, through a stormwater? Um any uh gas uh power issues, there's usually a fail stop, which is, which is on their site plan. When they do the building structures, they'll show the site plan, so there's fail stop do that. As far as the road, um they're gonna put in petition to purchase the end of Bash Road and make a new road. Uh so you won't be able to exit off Bash Road, you'll be able to exit off of um, um six ninety.
So the questions he's asked is, is, is he has, you have answers to those?
Yeah.
That will, will uh cover the concerns that.
Right, right. Uh I just wanted to put in writing for you, correct?
All right, woman Cooper.
You said we won't be able to exit off of your Bash Road.
Right, right, there, um, there, there are two property owners, I believe, at the edge of a piece, a piece of property adjacent to um six ninety.
Do you mean, do you mean we won't be able to exit off of Tram?
I'm sorry, Tram Road, I'm s- Tram. Tram Road, Tram Road, okay, yes, Tram, I'm sorry, that's the street I live on, too. Tram, 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 tram road, tram road.
Um, I thought I saw the gentleman from Circle K here, um, can we see, they had a rendering of the public building, can we see that?
Uh, it's not.
Is that allowed?
Not allowed, but, uh.
Ms. Webb, uh, can you help us out there?
I suppose she just answered it allowed. Being that it's not a public hearing, it's just a straight site plan review, so therefore, you can't leave, you, um, no, it's not allowed. It's not allowed, it's not.
Uh, let, let us hear from Ms. Webb. That's, that's real talk.
Yeah, I, I would, I would agree with Ms. Page.
Okay, well.
She's, she's actually the authority on the, the something in place.
And you were the one that keep us off, right? I was just relative from Ms. Webb, not everybody.
She's right about any, I mean.
I, I appreciate that, I appreciate that.
But yeah, we got a big upper hearing.
Okay.
And just a site plan review.
But the point is, we can't hear from everybody on the data. Real talk. Okay, so we cannot.
Okay.
Okay.
I was, oh, we see a motion, sorry.
Okay.
Thank you. I make a motion that we approve case number eighteen dash one oh one, consideration of Circle K. Uh, NTI brag slash vast request for a CP site plan review.
Uh, Alderman Christian.
Second that motion.
It has been moved in second, that case that we approve, case eighteen dash one zero one, consideration of Circle K, NTI brag, vast road, request for a CP site plan review. You heard the motion, are you ready for the question? All in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, sign of nay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Good night, I knew.
Thank you, Ms. Page. All right. As we move on now, uh, ten F, and the local agreement, Mr. Gerald.
Yes, Mayor, thank you, Mayor Ford of Alderman. Uh, this is an interlo, uh, interlocal agreement in the town of Spring Lake in the county. Uh, this is for inspection services. This is to cover the inspection services for the town. Currently, we do not have an inspection officer. We have tended to the mayor offer, but we have not gotten a firm reply. And also, uh, thank you for granting me town engineer position. But in, in, before those positions come on, we need to have this interlocal agreement with the county.
Alderman Southern.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'd like to make a motion to approve the interlock agreement between Cumberland County and the town of Spring Lake Building Inspection Services.
Alderman Cooper.
I second that motion.
It has been moved in second to approve the general local agreement for building inspection services. You heard the motion, are you ready for the question? All in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, sign of nay. Did you get that, Ms. Webb?
Yes, sir.
All right, ordinance two thousand eighteen nine condemnation and demolition, Mr. Ford.
Evening, Mayor Ford of Alderman. This is in reference to case number two thousand sixteen zero zero five. And that address is two hundred South Bragg is gonna do the biscuit kitchen. Um, we weren't on that for a while, it's finally to that point. Um, I did give y'all some pictures of Ashley, Ashley this morning, I took those in a little packet. It's got a little timeline on it. Uh, on that timeline, it goes back to two thousand thirteen, we had some issues with the, uh, sign, they had some advertising violations. Um, that tripped it on to two thousand sixteen, which a hearing was called, and nobody showed up. Um, that kinda got jumbled around until October twenty ninth, two thousand sixteen, where a representative of the property, he's actually a broker, although, he showed up, and we kinda worked with him. Gave him a little more time because his complaint was due to the DOT road construction. Uh, so we gave a little more time to get stuff done they needed to the building. October twenty ninth, two thousand eighteen, I still have to do that. We did send them another notice, uh, kinda tell them about his meaning of what was gonna happen. They did do a little work, did a Thanksgiving break, but it wasn't sufficient enough to actually bring the property up to current code or actually demolish it. So, with that being said, uh, I'm trying to move on with the condemnation and demolition of that actual property.
Mr. Gerald.
Yes, um, I'm encouraged with that, I believe we do need, I believe, to, uh, let the attorney take and handle this case from this point forward. I did speak with the owner, he did appear to be litigious. So, I believe, um, from this point forward, I think we should move forward with the process as long as the attorney takes the lead, I think that should be.
Mr. Mayor, can I get your third? Uh, sir, I have not seen the documents. Um, obviously, it is a serious undertaking for a town to order demolition of a privately owned building or to demolish it. The town has adequate statutory authority to do that, as long as the proper steps are followed. You hear attorneys say the phrase due process often, that just means notice, and they're not the candidate to be heard. Um, I just would like on behalf of the town to satisfy myself that all of the required statutory and constitutional steps have been taken uh, to avoid liability to the town. So, Mr. Mayor, I, I believe you have two choices. Uh, either you wish, approve this subject to legal review and approval, or defer it to the next meeting.
Uh, Alderman Southern rang in first, then Cooper, then Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we follow the recommendation of the town attorney. I second that motion.
Ms. Webb.
Could I get clarification on which recommendation?
The recommendation is to make sure that he gets to look at the documentation, turn it over to the mayor, I mean, the, uh, town attorney, the last one he just stated.
So, do you prefer to defer it to the next meeting, the whole matter? Or, so you prefer her to, uh, to approve subject to subsequent legal review and approval?
Yes, sir.
And, uh, the second?
That was, uh, subject to the attorney's, uh, review, yes.
Okay, you heard the, you heard the motion. It has been moved in second, it has been moved in second. Those in favor of approval subject to attorney review? Sign of aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed, sign of nay. Okay, we're down to ten, ten, thank you, sir, we're down to ten H. The board should determine the meeting schedule for December twenty fourth. Alderman Cooper.
I make a motion that we, uh, cancel meeting for December twenty fourth.
Second.
It has been moved in second that we cancel the meeting for December twenty fourth. You heard the motion, are you ready for the question?
Question.
All in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, sign of nay. All right, we're down to the last word with Mayor Procham will get it. Good night. All right, God, we got the jury first, now he said good night. Well, then, that's, that's good, that's good, right there, in that case, I get the, um. I get the last word. Right there, I got the gavel. It has been moved in second, somebody moved, no, the, the mayor Procham moved. Two seconds.
I'll say that again.
Two seconds. All in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, sign of nay.
Nay.
All the ayes have it.